Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board February 21st, 2023. My name is Mighty Aitken for Hammond. Boyman, this is O'Brien, Mr. Hamill, Mr. Chin, Mr. Frankel, our clerk, Mrs. Noonan, the head of Inspection Services, he's Rob Conlon. And if you've got a cellphone, you can please put it on silent and shut it off so you don't interrupt me. But you're going to talk, if you could step outside, please, because we're trying to hear here ourselves. Under old business. We're having some variance finance and malls existing structures, multiple properties and construct the Friday 6th residential units on 211-217-COPLIN-1234-1244, Farnesbury Parkway. You have the floor, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's come to our attention that the board is short a member this evening, and Mr. Redell was not able to attend. In my client's best interest, you know, we are requesting a continuance of this matter to the next hearing date, which is March 7th. Hopefully, there's not too many people here that were for this particular matter. I just want to thank Counselor Devine.
Yeah.
He was very helpful in notifying a lot of people so they wouldn't appear tonight, knowing that it's being continued to March 7th. So, thank you to him.
Thank you. Another motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number ZBA 22-85, Robert Benares for variance finding to demolish the existing structures on multiple properties and construct a 46 unit residential building on the premises numbered 1234-1244, Farnesbury Parkway, and 211 and 217 Copland Street, I make a motion to move the meeting, move the hearing till March 7th.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Is anyone here for that? It's going to be March 7th. Further, Anthony Pastore, case number ZBA 2298 for variance finding to renovate unfinished basement and create a six unit on the premises 64 Thero Road in Quincy. Is the up kind of there, representative here?
Yes.
Step forward and state your name and address on the record, please.
Take it over.
Yeah, Paul, if anyone's going to testify tonight, Mr. Chin, could you please give everyone a note? If you're going to testify, if you think you might testify tonight, please raise your right hand, stand up. If you don't, you're not going to testify.
Only one person?
All cases, not this case, every case tonight. If you think you're going to testify, you're going to speak at all, please stand up and take a note.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter in hearing this evening? Yes.
Name and address, please.
Anthony Pastore, 64 Thero Road, Quincy.
Why don't you tell us what you want to do down there?
So, I have an unfinished basement, and I was looking to add a studio apartment in the area.
Now, that was a lot of storage down there, right? Any of the units have storage down there?
So, they did, they don't anymore.
Why's that?
Well, they cleared out.
Because you asked them?
Correct.
Okay. Did they already have contracts with you for a year?
The tenants?
Huh?
The tenants?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any questions? I know it's just, you got a kitchen attic, but it is, it's stewed. Isn't it one bedroom, get a bedroom down there, too?
I wish, it's just.
Not for me.
What do you have for parking?
So, I have two reserved spaces and then a street parking.
Two reserved and street parking.
When you get onto the right and you get out, is that your two spaces?
So, when you pull in?
Yeah.
The first building is mine, not the farther one, all the way down. So, yeah, the two spaces, there's like the parking.
All right, if you can have a seat. Does anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Letter correspondence here, where you above the project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or on your side? First call, second call, third call closed. I just think you just added some trouble down there. You've got five units in it, and the parking is horrendous down there as it is. I just, I just, I'm not going to be in favor, it's just, it's just too much. I understand today's ranch, you'd like to get another ranch, but, you know, you got to have some parking on the streets here, so I'm not saying that. So, Brian?
Yeah, I think the parking issue, you're really squeezing with the guy next door here on there. Two units, 10, it's a 14 required, and adds two. Find that difficult.
I agree with you. Parking is terrible around there, it just makes it worse. You're already minus parking you should have, so I'm not in favor.
I agree with the commentary made.
Do you want to make a motion withdraw without prejudice, or you want us to vote?
Yeah, withdraw, I guess.
Motion withdraw without prejudice, please.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZBA 22-98, Anthony Pastore for variance finding to renovate the unfinished basement to create a six unit on the premises numbered 64 Thero Road, I make a motion to allow the petition to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Further, under tonight's business, new business, ZBA 22108, JCBT architect for variance finding to construct a second floor and attic in attached rear garage in the existing single-family home on the premises 23 Mile. Up kind of representative here?
Yes. Hi, good evening, Chair and members of the board. My name is Bonnie Tam with JCBT Architect, representing the owner on 23 Mile Street.
Why don't you just tell us what you want to do?
Okay. Currently, the existing single-family sits in the residential B zone with about 949 square feet of living space, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half bath. Owner is seeking for a second floor addition with the removal of the existing detached garage and put in a two-car attached garage on the ground floor. The proposed, with the proposed additions, the total living area will be 3,870 square feet with four bedrooms and three-and-a-half baths, seeking where you are setback FAR law coverage and finding on an existing non-conforming lot.
One second. Yeah, could you please? On the garage here, are you putting anything on top of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that where you're going to put a workspace?
No, that's the living space.
One thing?
Another one of them has to work.
Yeah, that's the one.
That's West, don't it?
That's the master, that's another bedroom above the garage. The garage is right here.
No, I want to see the print where it's all together, and it's not, it's not even on there, nowhere.
What's all together?
The new plot line. Do you have it? You have any plot line with the drawing?
Yeah. That was over the front?
Oh. I don't have it. Any questions, O'Brien?
Not at this time. No questions.
You're going to keep this single family, correct?
Yes. Existing houses really small, I mean.
No, I know, I know it is, it's just so close to the outline, you're bringing it all the way back with the other people I know. And then you add a...
It's not wanting the existing.
Then you got, then you got the add-on for the driveway in the back?
Yes, for the turning of the two-car garage, they need that turn, too.
With all that, with all that that you're putting on that little lot, I would love to see that pavement's come impervious, that you're taking up the whole lot as this, it's...
We'll work something out on the pavement there.
Like from the house back, you know what I mean? Where that 16-6 line is?
From where the new addition is.
Yeah, where the new addition's going, from their back, with their turning area, that would be all.
They're adding this.
I know, I know. And what I'd like to see is from that line here, from where the end of the existing houses, take that out and make that all impervious, it'll all look the same, one piece, that's just my two comments. Anything else, guys?
I'm good. Yeah, I mean, you're right, it's only a 4,900 square foot lot.
I know.
You're essentially building an entire thing.
You're taking the whole thing up with no brain, you know. All set?
Yes.
Is there anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Do you have the letters? All right, one second. Second call. Third call. Have, yes, these are all in favor? Yeah, all right, so they're going to make this one up here. One is just, you can read that quick, just roughly that, what you're saying, who it's from.
I hope to attend tonight's ZBA hearing, but I'm under the weather of not be able to do so. Personally, I think the proposal for 23 Mile Street looks good. It is particularly nice to see the applications for single-family renovations in which the property remains a single family. Thank you very much, Richard Ash Esquire, Ward Two Civic Association. Continue?
No, that's good.
There's another, there's another one.
Is that a different person?
I think so.
Oh, that's this one. Yeah, go ahead, finish.
To make concern, my name is Laura Moy, I live with my daughter with 41 Silver Street, Quincy, Mass, and I have received notice in the mail of the City of Quincy Inspection Services regarding an application to operate a short-term rental. No, that's the wrong one, Fox Street.
That's Fox. Wait a minute. Yeah, this is Fox Street.
Both of them are Fox.
How would she do that?
My turn.
This is what, I mean, she's talking about, I oppose that allowing the owner to violate Quincy ordinance by short-term rentals, and then it goes...
That stuff.
Yeah. And then it says proposed changes at ZBA, she's writing all about our whole plan to do that. Plans look wonderful, best of luck to the owner, she's in favor of Mount Street, at least, likes Mount Street.
Got that straight.
Second call. Third call, qualified name calls, a letter here from DPW that they have, and do the case and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or on your side? First call, second call? No one wants to speak, quiet tonight. Third call closed. Yeah, I mean, that's the one thing I'd really like to see, is just that clean up on the back, yeah, we can put that in minutes. Is there anything else you guys are looking for there? I know it's kind of, I don't know why they, it's probably just the turning, that's why they kept it on that line, you know? Got it straight, and now with the whole back of the house. Good? Good? All right, motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, regarding ZBA 22-108, JCBT architect for variance of finding to construct a second floor and an attic and an attached rear garage in the existing single-family home on the premises numbered 23 Mile Street, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding with the addition that pavements be included from the existing building back to the end of the new building, all right?
Yeah, and the turnaround, yeah. Second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Yes.
You're up.
One person?
Yeah, one second. KBC Architect, case number ZBA 22112, for variance to demolish the existing two-car garage and rebuild an accessory structure with the two-car garage on the ground level and storage space above. That's where I live, I saw the plan somewhere.
Good evening.
Name and address.
Good evening, my name is Bonnie Tam with JCBT Architect, representing the owner on 95 West Elmet, proposing a detached garage rebuilt and requesting, it'll be a workshop on the second floor, so requesting a 18-feet-high variance and side yard, side back.
On the, what's he going to do with the work? What kind of work's he going to do in it?
I did not ask.
Yeah, well, it's an easy way to turn a garage into a workshop and start doing things in it, I'm just, you know, second floor.
I have the owner here, I have the mark.
Yeah, and when it's time, I'll ask him. Another thing, why, why did you go so close to the lot lines?
Because the existing garage is so close to the house, moving it over to meet the setback would not make the second car to turn in.
To get in there?
Yeah.
All right. What's going to be on top? The owner here, you want to, name and address, record, please.
It'll mark Hebert to 95 West Delmat.
What are you going to do up there?
I need some storage space. Every time I want to use my table saw right now, I have to get all the cars out, pull it out, do all this rigging rules, I just want to have that up there. We have two young kids now, so I have a lot of storage that I need if I want to put the cars in the garage.
You have a basement?
The basement is a mess.
I didn't ask you that, that's your fault.
Well, I'd be coming here for another, to have that, but anyway, there is a basement.
Coming again?
There is a basement, yes.
Are you coming again?
No.
Do what? I thought you said...
Oh, no, no, to refinish the basement, I'd have to come in and do a hole. This, this is the easier option, we figured, than refinish the basement and dig it deeper so there's had room.
Oh, all right. Well, what, what's all the equipment that you're going to put in there? You run contract and work anywhere?
No, I'm, I'm a physicist at a hospital, I don't do any stuff like any woodwork, I do just fun stuff.
Okay. All right, I just don't want to see that, and then the neighbors go, because we're across here because you got a business going on down there, making noise at 2:00 in the morning, if you wait till you're out all night. I have no more questions. Anything?
No, we don't have to put water or anything up there, right?
No, you can get a water, no sewer line, just a, you know, no sewer.
No, I mean, that's...
Just a...
Otherwise, we stayed it, right?
Yeah, we could stay it, just like, you know, water.
We don't want to turn, we don't want to turn it into a living space, is what we're saying.
So that there are no plans for water or sewer, I mean, physically impossible to connect the sewer unless we actually trench down the driveway and do a whole new connection.
Can't go into the house?
No, the way the house, the slope wouldn't work running through the house.
So, we looked into it.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I, no, I, yes.
All right, good enough, thanks. Should be no water and sewer in there, you can put it in. I'm all set, anything else?
No, I'm all set.
Motion, please? Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, hold on.
Yeah, no surgery.
No living space, no, the bar, just the bar.
My name is Tony Reynolds, I'm the owner, occupant of 96 East Delmat. I would like to give my support for the variance to be granted through demolition and build a new floors garage. The existing garage backs up to my yard and is very deteriorated and quite an eyesore. The meeting is tonight at 6:00 PM at City Hall, I am unable to attend, give my support for the project, please go forward. This letter sufficient to support my search, I may be read at tonight's hearing. Tony Reynolds, and our telephone.
Should have sent the Uber down, got him here, guys doing all this for you, and buying dinner.
I would have.
I got a, anyone want to speak in favor? No, okay, I got a letter here from the ZBA, they reviewed the case and they have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or on your side here? Second call, third call? No, call or close. On the motion, please?
Mr. Chairman.
No water and sewer.
I got it. Regarding, regarding case ZBA 112, JCB Architect for variance to demolish the existing two-car detached garage and rebuild an accessory structure with a two-car garage on the ground level and storage space above the premises numbered 95 West Delmat in New Quincy, I make a motion to grant the requested variance subject to no water or sewer being installed on the site.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
ZBA 232, Patrick Foley Esquire, for variance finding in the existing two-family home into a three-family home on the premises 43 Roslin Ave. Counsel, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Patrick Foley, and I'm the attorney for the proposal at 43-45 Roslin Street. Unfortunately, our architect had something come up last minute, so I'm joined here today by Chris Vasquez, who is the property owner, and we'll walk through the plans with myself. 43-45 Roslin Street is in the residential B zoning district. The street, if you're familiar with it, it's a mix of single families, two families and three families. Actually, this property, 43-45 Roslin, directly behind it abuts the Fox Rock Quincy Hospital project, so he's going to have a couple hundred units in his backyard in the next year or two. Currently, right now, the 6,476 square foot two-family home has an illegal third unit in the attic. The applicant purchased the home in late 2020, and he's here now to make the unit legal. Applicant is seeking to improve the property and make it safer, safer. All the setbacks and the height will remain the same, the FAR will bump from .48 to .58. Currently, right now, the house is able to park one car in the driveway to the right-hand side. Luckily for him right now, the tenants, it's only two cars on the, on the property. What he is seeking to do now is he's going to create seven parking spots, which will be one spot shy of what is required by zoning. What we'll see with the parking is they'll go down the, they'll be no longer parking in the driveway, they'll go down the driveway with the car currently parked now, and there's one, two, three, four, five spots in the back there. Right now, there's a shed, which will be removed, replaced with the parking spots, and then there'll be two tandem spots to the left-hand side, which will be assigned to one, probably unit three, but the tandem will belong to the same unit as well. The building now will be fully sprinkled if it's, if the variances are granted. I want to add that the roof will be changed from a regular roof to a mansard roof, and like I mentioned before, the lodge shed in the back will also be removed. Let me just go through. For currently, right now, when you go to the front door, to get into unit one, you go to, you walk up the front stairs, you go to the left, unit one's there, and unit two will be on the right-hand side. So, what's going to happen now is when you go inside, as you go to unit two on the right-hand side, you'll be going up to unit three, which is up in the attic. All three of these units will be three, have three bedrooms in them. It's going to be 1,284 square feet as well. And like I said, the parking right now is, you know, if there's people going over to the house, or if there's visitors, like we said, it's only able to park one car in the driveway. At least now, we are given a parking plan with, able to park some cars in the back and get some cars off the street.
I just want to fix the parking.
Put back, Chris, can you put back the parking?
So you're saying there's two on the right, you're going, that's one unit?
Yes. And these are apartments, too, just one side of apartment.
How many bedrooms upstairs now?
Three.
There's three now.
Yeah.
Each one is a three-bedroom unit right now?
Yes.
So, that's nine now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Wow. It doesn't fit any of your bedrooms up here, just refiguring.
Yes. And none of the, all the, everything's pre-existing non-conforming right now, the only thing that's changing is the roof, and every unit will have an egress in the back, like I said, the garage in the back's going to be taken out, and the roof's going to become a mansard roof, yeah, but everything else should be staying the same, so, with the building, the footprint.
When did you buy this? And the people have been living there since?
Yes.
Say the whole property will be wrinkled?
Yes, yes.
Can you talk to the green space that you're going to be losing in the back? It's going to be all paved over, obviously, for the whole...
Yeah, unfortunately, with the...
Paved for the two tandem in the driveway, it's going to get extended, so you're going to be losing a fair amount of green space, but, yeah.
We're really trying to work just with the parking, to get the parking to work, because that's such, we talked to Counselor Phelan, too, and that's the issue of that neighborhood right now, is parking. I understand what you're saying with the green space, but we're just trying to get Kyle off the street.
Do you have a little bit in the front, I guess?
Yes.
To the left side? Is that grass right now? Yeah. What can we...
Water.
Yeah, like he's talking about, take some of that out and put in some pavements or something, make it a different, wall-to-wall. Looks like the project behind.
Just a little bit smaller.
Make it a little friendlier, you know what I mean? Maybe? Instead of all that tar? Yeah, maybe? Think?
Yeah.
Really, come, take some tar out of there.
Yeah, Chris, that's just pavements.
Like, it, it, yeah.
I'm not sure.
Like, the house, from the house back, in the front, you know what I mean?
Absolutely, yes.
And then the back, I get it, it's in the back of the house, but, streetwise, it'll look nice.
Okay, you want the right side?
Both sides, all the way to the back of the house. And if they paved the back, yeah, they paved the back behind the house, it's, it's going into paving anyway on the other side. Just clean it up a bit, look nice. That's all I have. Anyone?
After the two parking spaces on the left, is there going to be some kind of barrier so they just can't go right across the lawn?
The tandem spots?
Huh?
The tandem spots to the left? What was the question?
Is there going to be some kind of blockage here so they just can't run across the lawn?
Chris, you guys have a fence of some sort?
Yeah, we can push it, you guys propose.
Okay.
You know, small piece of fencing there or something?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Couple posts.
Couple granite posts.
Anything else, Mr. Chin?
No, everything else.
I got it, thank you. Thank you, guys. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? You guys may have a seat. Anyone speak in favor, first call?
I just want to make sure if there's no others here tonight.
Hey, there you go. Hey, there you go, Danny.
Uh, John Waterfield, sixty-two Grand Wall Road. Sounds to me like the applicant's gonna make it safer with new egresses, and we definitely need more parking. And considering how many, I think Fox Rock wanted to build about like a hundred more units, so therefore, at least we're getting one of those units back, thank you. And I could imagine all the dust and stuff that blew on this poor guy's house during that construction, so the people that live up in that area, if they wanna develop, um, for everybody up there, as long as they're in residential B. The residential A people, no. This is Res B, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm in favor of this project, thank you.
Anyone else wanna speak in favor, last call? All party hearing closed, I have a letter here from the DPW, what's the-
DPW, uh, forty-three Rosen Avenue, case ZBA twenty-three dash two. We have received this middle for the above referenced project, and our comments is followed. Number one, specify how much of previous area will be increased due to the development. Number two, provide plan showing the layout of the new utilities. Three, explain how the service runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, provide dimensions and grades for paving area in all driveway entrances. And five, will there be any fill or change of grades due to the development? That's engineering, okay? As further information is required, please advise.
Is there anyone opposed to run the side? First call? Second call? Third call closed. Yeah, I mean, that'll look nice in the front, I'll be happy. Gonna look nice and safe though.
Good?
Yep.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case ZBA twenty-three dash two. Patrick Foley Esquire, for variance and finding to convert the existing two-family home into a three-family home on the premises number forty-three Rosen Avenue, Quincy. I make a motion to grant the requested variance and finding. Additionally, the driveways, the existing driveway on the right-hand side of the house, and the driveway on the left-handed side of the house, to the, to the limits of the existing structure, will be pavers, not pavers. Okay?
And something to hold that fence.
And, uh, some safety install on the left-hand side, okay?
Esthetically pleasing fencing.
Second?
Second. Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, so move. Thank you for the-
Thanks.
Further on to tonight's agenda, STR twenty-two thirteen. Quinhow Pan, any good? Bad?
Chin Ho Pan. I'm sorry, she closed right there.
That's where I closed, thank you very much. Uh, it's for a special permit to operate a short-term rental on the premises number eighty Baxter Street. Sir, name and address for record, you have the floor.
Yeah, uh, yes, my name is Chin Ho Pan, maybe eighty Baxter Avenue.
What's your name?
Chin Ho Pan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you want a short-term rental?
Yeah.
Alright. I have a paper here that says you sold this house in twenty nineteen.
Yeah. Uh, that's my son, my son, yes.
But everything here is in your name?
Yeah, uh-
How's that work?
Yeah, I'm a work for my, um, well, I work for my son.
Okay.
My son's a computer, uh, doing computer.
Yeah.
He doesn't know how to-
But you're not the owner?
Yeah, um, my son's the owner, yeah.
But your son owns it, not you?
Not me.
Alright, but all the paperwork is in your name, correct?
That's right.
Alright. What are we doing here? You don't own the house.
You do have a letter of authorization.
It's a letter of-
To speak?
Yeah.
But all the paperwork-
Application, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All the paperwork. I'm saying, isn't all the paperwork in his name?
Lawyers, no whisper.
Hey, guys. Two lawyers.
Yeah, we're discussing.
Oh.
We're looking at the letter of authorization.
Right, in- instead of, I think, they got him as the owner, and everything about his, his receipts, even though he's living there.
Right.
He don't own the house, to, to-
To file the application, to file the application.
Right. It, it should be the owner that's filing it, and then he has the power of attorney to speak for him.
But all the paperwork should be in his name, right? So why don't we just, you're gonna have to go on the DPW, refile this again, in your son's name. He owns the property. You can speak for him here, but all this paperwork has to be in his name. Does he live at the property?
Yeah.
So why didn't he fill it up? You live at the property?
I'm living the property, he lives in the property too, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Is this the only property he owns?
Yes.
Just this one?
Yeah.
Alright. How many units are there?
Uh, one.
One?
Yeah.
Okay. So you just wanna rent out rooms?
Yeah, it doesn't want room, you know, so.
Yep, but you have to do the paperwork right, you, you're not the owner of the property, and all paperwork's in your name. So it has to be in your son's name.
Okay, sure.
So, seeing the head, head inspector here, he's in charge, he's the commissioner down there, he'll take care of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a question, sir.
Go ahead.
So before I'm doing this application, I read, uh, the regulations, and, uh, consulted the, especially your service department.
Mm-hmm.
They said I can be operator of this business, and I can apply this permit.
You don't own the house. The only, the only way you can do this is if you own the house, and you're gonna be renting. You have to live in it. Your son has to put it all in his name and sign a paper saying he lives there. And if he don't live there, and he gets caught, something will be bad and will happen.
Oh.
Fines and fines and fines, you won't, wouldn't be worth your money, so, meet Mr. Conlon.
Yeah.
He'll take care of it.
Okay.
And, uh, you just gotta refile on his name, if the application's again given to him. The electric bill has to be in his name, he owns it. Utilities has to be in his name.
Arrest.
That he's paying all the bills, he lives there, and then he signs a document that says he lives in that home and he's renting it out. Is there anyone here to speak on that piece of property, Baxter? No?
We really have a problem with that, I don't know about this part of it, so.
Yeah, it's like-
Yeah, I mean, I, see, that's a, that's a technicality of that.
But it could be a problem, too.
Oh, yeah.
You know, 'cause he signed the papers, he lives there, but what if the son don't live? Says he does.
I, I understand.
Then you got a real problem. Yeah. So these letters for that, we're gonna have another one. We're not even gonna hear it, because it's, the paperwork's wrong. Thank you.
Alright, so what do we do?
Now, we just-
We don't need to vote, right?
No, it's, the paperwork, we should deny it for improper, improper party. Alright, give a motion to deny us improper paperwork.
Okay.
Or withdraw.
Huh?
Or withdraw.
Withdraw without prejudice, I'm ready to file again.
Withdraw?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, regarding case number STR twenty-two dash thirteen, Kin Ho Pan, for a special permit to operate a short-term rental on the premises number eighty Baxter Avenue, Quincy. I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
On the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both, so move. Last case, STR twenty-three-one, help me with this one.
Chong Yang.
Chong Yang. For a special permit to operate a short-term rental on the premises number one-seventy-six West Elm Street. Name and address for the record, you have the floor.
Uh, hi, good evening, uh, my name is Chong Yang. I'm here to represent, uh, Da Hui Mei, uh, who is applying for the short-term rental, uh, for the property located at one-seventy-six West Elm Avenue.
And all the paperwork's been filed, and you're doing the speaking, and he's the owner of the home?
Uh, we actually co-own the home, but he lives there, we are friends, um, he-
So he's both on it, you're both on the deed?
Yes.
Okay. So he lives there?
Right.
And he's, and how many, how many apartments are there?
Uh, there are, uh, three bedrooms. We plan to, uh-
How many apartments do you have, just one single-family home?
Uh, you mean, uh, us?
How many apartments in the house?
Uh, it's a single-family house.
That's what I wanna know, okay. I didn't know if those two there or not, just, we don't know until later. Uh, so explain what you wanna do.
Uh, we, uh, are applying for a short-term rental license, uh, to rent out to the two other rooms, um, in a, a house, uh, to, uh, tourists.
To tourists?
Yeah, to people who are visiting Quincy, Boston.
Yep, uh, and you stay in the house all the time? You live there all the time?
He asked you, is he in the house all the time? Just,住在那? Yeah, he said yes.
Alright, uh, was there someone, I saw something somewhere on that piece of property? Okay. There was a little problem, we didn't know who, because they had two names on it.
Yeah.
You don't live with him?
No.
Okay. You're just on the deed.
Uh, yeah. We, we are friends, uh, because he doesn't speak English.
Yeah.
That well, uh, and I, I, I'm responsible for the communication with guests. And he lives there, and he maintains a house, uh, and do all the work, so we, we share the, uh, some of the work.
Who's the utilities bills on?
Uh, on his name.
His name?
Yeah.
Okay. And I'm sorry, you don't live there?
No.
No.
But I also live in Quincy, so I'm, uh, sitting in Quincy.
An investor. The front. Any questions, guys? No?
Not quick claim. So it says here that there's a, uh, some sort of financial distress, that you need the short-term rental to pay the mortgage?
Uh, it's not distress, it's, uh, like, uh, the house is, uh-
I need the income to pay for the mortgage and property tax of the house.
Yeah, that will help us pay.
Okay, so, I mean, quick claim deed is dated January twenty-twenty-two, so what's happened in between last year and this year that's caused the financial hardship?
Oh, no, no, it's not, it's not, that's, uh, uh, we don't have financial hardship. It's, it's like, when you buy a house, you, you need to pay for the cost, so, uh, that's part of the reason that we are doing this, otherwise, we don't need-
Have you rented it out before?
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you ever get a ticket for that?
Uh, what's, what is ticket?
A fine?
Uh, no.
No. And the reason you're here is because the rules changed, and now you have to come up in front of the city, correct?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Yep. I just didn't know if you got caught and a fine last year, and you just, I, I didn't, I don't know. I'm just asking questions, that's what I'm here for. Put it all together in my head. Any other questions, gentlemen? No, all sit.
Wanna ask for the dollar?
They only cost you a dollar by the house.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's one certain-
Company of Financial Intelligence, a dollar.
LLC, okay. Out of, out of Hammond Parkway in Chestnut Hill, is that correct?
Yeah, that, I, yes, I previously lived in, uh, Chestnut Hill, but I moved to Quincy.
Okay, so it says for full consideration and paid in full, one dollar.
Yeah, that, that is because we, uh, we need to refinance the house, so we transfer from the LLC to persons.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can have a seat, is there anyone wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call? John?
Uh, John Waterfield, sixty-two Grand Wall Road, this is residential B? This, this location?
Yes.
Okay, so, I mean, as long as it's Res B, I'm in favor of this, I was just looking at the map, this is only one house away from the beach, walking distance to the clam box. This is a nice area, so I, you know, people can come to Quincy, they got a twenty-one-hundred square foot house, I actually think this is the perfect place for Airbnb, so I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Is there any, is there anyone else in favor? Second call, third call? I have a letter here from the DPW that they have reviewed the project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed to run the side? First call? Second call? Third call closed. You have a motion?
I, we-
Oh, go ahead.
We, I think we're having an issue with inspections. The inspections are not done until we're granting it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So shouldn't we subject the approval to the inspection?
Well, if, if, they don't get a, they don't get a permit to, to rent, if it wasn't right.
They don't pass health fire-
They don't pass health fire, they don't get the, they don't get the-